Okay. Good evening and welcome to our February work session for Wasika Public Schools School Board. Tonight is Thursday, February 3rd, 2022 at 5:30 PM, and we're in the central building, second floor conference room. So we just have three items on our agenda tonight. Anyone who's interested can find our agenda on the school board web page on our website. And up first is our staff spotlight, and tonight we have Brianna Lawrence, who is our cultural liaison. So thank you for being here. And we've had this position for quite a number of years in the district, but this is your first year in the position, right?
Yes.
Well, we're excited to hear from you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for having me come today and for letting me speak a little bit about my job here. So I do have some things to pass out. Yes, feel free, take one, pass it down. My position, I look at it kind of twofold. There's the cultural liaison piece, and then what I'm passing out is the migrant liaison aspect of my role as well. So when you think cultural liaison, it's really about accessibility. What things are we doing as a school district that maybe need a little bit of support in terms of getting the word out to families who need it? So that's one aspect. That's the cultural liaison aspect of it. And then you'll see in front of you the responsibilities of the migrant liaison. That's a huge part of my role. So I am working with families as they are moving back and forth from Wasika to Wasika. I have about 50 students that come and go throughout the school year. I see lots of students in the fall that usually head back to wherever parents are working, which is typically Texas, in the October time. So we'll see them exit Wasika. That's really about helping facilitate, do they need their school records? What types of things can I help them out with? Maybe it's talking with their school counselors down in Texas as well. And then welcoming them back in the springtime. So that's a large part of my role, and it goes into detail on the piece of paper there. I do speak Spanish, which is super helpful in the position as well. So though my cultural liaison piece is separate technically from interpreting, I do offer some services with like conferences and helping with IEP meetings and all of that. So it's a fun role. I'm often out in the community networking with families and students to help them troubleshoot different issues within their school day and making sure that concerns or comments are known to teachers, to the school district, from families who may not have that English capacity. So I consider it a huge honor to be in this role, and it's been a ton of fun. So I'm happy to take any questions. That was a really brief run now.
If I could just add quickly two very visible things that Brianna has helped us with just recently that I think has been and made a big difference to our district is, one is the Spanish page on our website, having the opportunity to provide some access in the language of Spanish. As well as, you may have noticed, our last weather closing had Spanish language attached to it as well out to families. And that is her responding to me all hours of the day and night to say, this is the message. Can you quickly translate this for me? And now we have some templates, so we're good. But she's been very responsive. And those are, they're small things, probably in the scope of her day-to-day work, but they make big differences to our community. And those were both her ideas initiatives that we had talked about, but she made happen. So we really much, very much appreciate that with the support of Jenny Peña and other folks, obviously, through that process. But so thank you for that. So I just wanted to add that before she took questions.
Yeah, questions?
I don't know if I missed, but how many children usually you can see over, you know, during the school year?
It fluctuates, right? This being my first year, I only have a snapshot of what this past year looks like. And I anticipate because of the pandemic, it's much smaller than usual. But we did have 50 students with migrant status, which means that they, at any point, could be called back to a different state to work. So 50 students. I don't know how many families really, but it's a significant portion, especially when you're thinking about, I would need to then vet them for the state programming that they're eligible for. So yeah, like Eric said, it's not a nine-to-five job. It's any time of the day.
Yeah. And you also have a background in social work, is that correct? So how do you feel like that helps you with this position?
Good question. So I'm currently a graduate student for school counseling at Minnesota State University Mankato. I'm finishing out my last semester there.
Okay.
And it folds beautifully into the position. So you think about, not only are migrant students or students who do not speak English needing those resources that my cultural liaison position helps out with, but think of the social-emotional aspects of uprooting every single year, twice a year, not having a home really, or leaving that home and coming to a completely different community. So yes, it's a huge part, and I think it marries really nicely.
I agree. I think, I think it does. It's really nice to have that combined with this position.
Um.
Are there other schools around us that have a similar position?
We, so yes. Migrant liaisons are cultural liaisons. They go by different names, but typically each district, at least within Minnesota that I know of, have at least one, if not a team, working. I should clarify, my position is only 20 hours a week. And depending on the need, you'll see that the number of hours fluctuate for sure throughout the year. So yes.
Any other questions for Ms. Lawrence? Well, I appreciate you for coming and highlighting this really important part of our district. So it definitely serves a really important role. And we appreciate the work that you do. And I'm sure there's many weeks that you put in more than 20 hours, and we appreciate that as well.
Yes. And feel free to spread the word. If you do need anything translated, I'm your gal.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Excellent. And I would just add, Madam Chair, that that staff spotlight idea came from Dave as he was visiting a building and happened to be talking to Brianna and said, you know, I think that was something that the entire board would love, would enjoy hearing about. So as you have ideas, we finish this rest of this school year with those staff spotlights. If there are particular staff members you'd like to hear from, or you have an interaction with a building, or had an event that gives you an idea, please let me know as well.
Thank you, Brianna. Moving on then to our agenda. Next up, we have Jenny Art, who is a community member. And she has a presentation to share with us about some ideas for accessibility at our sports field. Thank you, Jenny, for being here. And thank you for bringing your family. It's lovely to have people in the audience.
So again, my name is Jenny Art, and I've put together a presentation on advocating for an accessible path for our athletic fields.
Okay.
I want to thank the board for allowing me to address you here today. A little bit about me. I am a lifelong resident of Wasika County, a wife and mother to four vivacious boys. In July of 2021, Governor Walz appointed me to replace Senator John Hoffman on the Minnesota Governors Council on Developmental Disabilities. I currently serve on the arc of Minnesota Capitol Connectors grassroots advocacy for District One. I'm a Partners in Policymaking 2020 graduate, and I'm set to graduate Class of 2022 with a Bachelor's in Applied Leadership with a minor in Business Law. I am passionate about educating on inclusion and fighting for the human rights of individuals with disabilities across Minnesota communities. Here's a good picture of what inclusion looks like. This slide shows the differentiation between exclusion, segregation, integration, and inclusion. According to EWAL 2019, there are five levels of inclusion: social, emotional, intellectual, spiritual, and comprehensive. These hockey photos here are a good representation of social inclusion. According to Network 2019, three reasons to make a city inclusive involve: one, sustainable growth, so community members assume responsibility to grow their community; two, uniting to improve the city through new perspectives to drive the city forward; and three, avert costly conflict where social exclusion creates denied access of liberty and rights. Social exclusion is addressed in the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Section 504 states that no qualified individual with a disability in the United States shall be excluded from, denied the benefits of, or subjected to discrimination under any program or activity that either receives federal financial assistance or is conducted by any executive agency or the United States Postal Service. Sadly, even with the passage of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, individuals with disabilities still face oppressive barriers when accessing modifications to exercise their rights and liberty. The Capitol crawl of 1990 was a bold visual demonstration. The young girl is Jennifer Kealan. She is crawling up the steps to demonstrate the need for the passage of ADA. President George H.W. Bush signed the Act into law in July of 1990, prohibiting discrimination based on disability. Unfortunately, still today, public accommodations are overlooked. On the 30th anniversary, ABC News interviewed Jennifer. She was quoted as saying, "I kind of feel like we've stepped backwards a bit." And she honestly doesn't believe that the ADA has solved every aspect of discrimination. Under the ADA Title III Public Accommodations, the Act requires compliance. Title III prohibits the exclusion, segregation, and unequal treatment. It further states that the reasonable modifications to policies, practices, and procedures be put into place for effective communication with people with hearing, vision, and/or speech disabilities, and other access requirements. According to Best of Wasika County, Wasika is an energetic wholesome community that welcomes and supports all people in all stages of life. We envision a future that strengthens our regional connections through leadership opportunities, economic development, and investment in high-quality community assets, resulting in creation of a vibrant, dynamic community of the future. According to the U.S. Department of Commerce, the city of Wasika has 18,740 residents, 8% of whom are under 65 and currently have a disability. According to the City of Wasika's LinkedIn page, "The mayor and city council have set the course for a prosperous future through their strong commitment to public safety and investment in parks, trails, the water park, and other amenities. The city's employees are dedicated to meeting the needs of its residents." The Wasika community is great about coming together, supporting, and celebrating each other. As you can see in this video, Wasika rallies for its youth. Here are some still shots so that you can see the remarkable presence of the community. The level of engagement that surrounds our youth is quintessential. According to the Wasika School District Policy 902 and 903, the school board encourages interest on the part of parents and community members in school programs and student activities, and they welcome visits to the school building and school property by parents and community members. Furthermore, the school board encourages maximum use of school facilities and equipment for community purpose. The Wasika community has an outstanding commitment to athletics. The Google Earth photo shows the layout of our athletic fields next to our immediate and junior/senior school complexes. If you look closely, you will see there are no accessible routes to most of the athletic fields. According to the U.S. Department of Justice and Civil Rights Division, the Architectural Barriers Act requires that buildings and facilities comply with federal standards for physical accessibility. Advisory 206.2.2, within a site, an accessible route is required to connect to the boundary of each area of sport activity. It further goes on to state, where multiple sports fields or courts are provided, an accessible route is required to each field or area of sport activity. No accessible routes to each athletic field create unnecessary barriers and pose accessibility issues for individuals with disabilities. Here's a short video of going through the grass in a wheelchair.
Have you done like a video on going through grass?
So if you want to go through grass, just kind of do it.
That's a video.
As you can see, the gentleman struggled. Not all disabilities look like the man in the wheelchair. Other disabilities include walkers, canes, crutches, scooters, braces, walking sticks, and some disabilities are hidden. To navigate accessibility barriers and social exclusion conflict, I put together an accessible path proposal consisting of two main paths and five adjacent paths. I hypothesized funding to be the biggest obstacle. Materials needed would include blacktopping materials, gravel, and forms. According to Krail, blacktop costs for 2021 average $3 to $15 per square foot. According to Home Guide, gravel costs for 2021 average $15 to $75 per yard. Crowdsourcing would tremendously reduce overhead costs associated with prepping the area for overlay. Obtaining a skilled community mentor to oversee and advise shop students on the project would expose students to professional trade experience and promote community involvement. Students could prepare the ground, distribute gravel, grade, and install forms. The north athletic area consists of 11 fields used for soccer, baseball, and softball. The pictures reference the elevation changes current as of 2021, respectively. The proposed north accessibility path consists of 399 yards. It would run east to west from its, from the WIS West parking lot. For 352 yards, the adjacent north path would run 47 yards. The central athletic area consists of six fields used for baseball, softball, and football. And again, the pictures reference the elevation changes current as of 2021. The proposed central accessibility path would consist of 66 yards, connecting the, to the existing bike path from west to east. That connection would go north, then east for 43 yards. The adjacent path would run west for 23 yards. The south athletic area consists of three fields for soccer, football, and marching band. The pictures reference the elevation changes current as of 2021. The proposed south accessibility path would consist of 579 yards. It would run east to west, connecting the main sidewalk to west of the school complex, follow the fence line south of the track and north of the wood line, finally connect to the existing bike path to the west. Lastly, the adjacent south accessibility path proposal consists of 225 yards. Both the southwest and southeast path would run north to south, parallel to each other, adjacent to the south pathway. I appreciate everyone's time today and your dutiful review and prioritization to remove barriers to create a more inclusive athletic field to meet the Wasika community needs. Please feel free to reach out to me with any comments, questions, or concerns. I can be reached at jenny.art@mnstu.edu. And here are my references. Thank you.
Did you want to add anything or follow-up, Jenny?
I'm open for any questions or comments that you might have.
Okay. Did you want to just kind of comment real quick? And then we'll open it up for the board if they wanted to jump on.
Certainly. I think that this is an area that we have some room to do some work in. And I think it's a, it's a very well-thought-out presentation, a very, oh, very valid concern with the accessibility we have to those fields back there at this time. You probably know this better than I do. So because it's a little different act than some what happens inside of our buildings. As I understand it, once we start doing renovation on something, then we're, then we're, then we're required to, of course, meet the current accessibility standards.
Yes.
Right. So that's what I'm, so that's what I'm thinking of. As we start to work through our current facility plan and start to look at, and our current facility planning has to do with potentially some work there on the intermediate school parking lot area. It may or may not impact some of the things that we have going on here in terms of field layout and such, in which case that would be the time to work through that. We also, I've also been thinking a lot about how Clint Flink and his work with Career Pathways, particularly the Construction Trades class, and the work that they can do to help support this. I do think it's worth exploring. I 100% am supportive of that conversation. I think you're right in terms of what the biggest barriers would be. I think February is a good time to start looking at it as it's cold and icy outside. I think that in terms of compliance, that's less of an issue because of the grandfather rules, but it's more about, we want to provide for our community going, going forward as we start making changes. So entertain questions, of course, for Ms. Art, for what she has to think about, or to put together for us. But I think it's an area of need that is well-identified.
Thank you.
Well, and I think that the district acknowledges that in that, you know, we built the new bathroom facility out there, recognizing that just having the porta potty out there was not accessible. And when we redid the parking lot there, we did add, we extended the sidewalk all the way along there, just, and that, I think, was important. So I mean, I don't feel like we're not out of compliance in that we didn't put new fields out there and ignored the situation. But at the same time, I think this should be on our radar, and it shouldn't be something that's many years down the road. It should be something that's a little bit more immediate if we could. That'd be my thoughts on it. But feel free to comment or ask questions and.
Is this something that the Facilities Committee could look at in the near future?
Yes. Yes, and that's.
Kind of have a discussion about it?
Correct. As we work through our current facility plans, wanted to make sure we had a chance to visit with you here tonight so that further information for any committee members. And then next time we meet, we'll work this into our conversation. Because then Colin will be a part of that conversation as well as Elizabeth and talk through our overall future plans. And probably utilize you as a resource going forward then in terms of how we, how we might work that in.
Do you have a printed copy of your?
I can definitely email, email one to you if you'd like. Otherwise, I can.
I have it also. I can make sure to email everyone on the board too.
Send out a blanket or whatever.
Yes, yep, yep. I can definitely share that.
I have all the slides.
I just didn't want to like pre-share it because I wanted Jenny to come in and give her presentation. So, but yes, I do have a copy of the presentation. So, yeah. I think that, I think you brought up like something that we weren't unaware of, but at the same, it's at the same time, both when Eric and I first got your presentation, we're like, well, yep. These are, these are things that should be a little bit more in the forefront of our, of our planning needs. And it's not something that can happen immediately, but it's something that should be a little bit more in the, in the, especially as we're thinking about facility changes. And yeah, it's really good timing, so.
Yeah, I think I noticed it more in, and I feel terrible because I've lived in this community my entire life. And I've always been avid in sports throughout the community. And I haven't, I had, it never really dawned on me until I have two children with disabilities. And I know my father, my father has a disability as well. And attending different events and trying to push a wheelchair across that field, it takes a lot of work. And if I'm not available, my, my, my mother, she's not able to do that. And I noticed, just being more aware when I attend the events, that there is a lot more in the community. I mean, we even have, if my recollection, my recollection serves me correctly, we even have a few coaches or assistant coaches that also have some physical disabilities that makes it tremendously hard for them to get out there. And they're utilizing their own personal vehicles to get out onto the field, which that, that's not accessible. You know, it's not friendly. And just being here throughout my entire life, just looking back and thinking, wow, like those fields have always been there, and we've just never, it's just always been an afterthought. And just bringing it to the forefront and making it, making everyone aware and doing what we can to make it accessible for all of everyone in our community, as well as the people that visit our community.
Yep. Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing this, bringing this to us. And again, this doesn't happen overnight. But it is something that's on our radar, and especially with our facilities plannings that we're working on. Hopefully, we can fit this into those plans as well as the budget then, so, yeah.
Again, thank you very much for your time. And I appreciate any comments or questions that you do have. And I will make sure that Julie has all of the slides and information available to each of you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
And thank you to your family for sitting through.
Yeah, thanks to have an audience.
All right then. Our last item on our agenda is to get the mid-year progress on strategic plan and vision cards specifically, so.
Correct. And last, I think last time we met, I did have the opportunity to pass around the vision card. Does anybody want an extra copy of that right now? Or is memory as I work through this going to be okay? Okay, if you need it, go ahead and ask. So one thing we started working on as we got into our vision card work was a lot of our goals this year, some were easier to measure mid-year for progress than others. But we did want to make sure we were tracking where we are in all of our, all of our information over the course of the school year. Interestingly enough, I brought this out at DLT. And Elizabeth, you can chuckle. We talked about this this morning, or maybe not chuckle, who knows? I said, you know, one of the things that we talked about in our, in January with our district leadership team was, oh, now I kind of see how some of this stuff is putting together. So some, some of this year is going to be a little clunky. Remember when I talked to you about this last July? This first year is a little bit learning how this process looks for accountability. And when we do the 2223 vision card, things are going to feel that much more direct. Great example, if you have a department such as food service, and you look at the goal of student support and supporting students' social-emotional well-being, that's not really part of food service. Well, do kids eat breakfast? Do they get good meals? Are they eating nutrition, nutritious meals? Yes, they are. So does that meet our goals towards student, student, social-emotional needs? It sure does. And so that's what the vision card helps bring out.
Thanks.
What the vision card helps bring out is where all of our departments can feed into our strategic plan and how that works. And so I just want to walk you through where we are mid-year right now. Some of these things, there's actually some numbers and some things to look at. Some of it's more of just the things we've been talking about thus far throughout the course of the school year. If we go to the first slide there, Elizabeth. So the first objective on our vision card is really about reading at grade level by third grade and making sure that our, our students are performing on standardized tests. We're making sure we're reducing the achievement gap, working through, being ready for a growth mindset and career and college readiness. So our students, this is for all our students that are at Hartley, and this is the FastBridge test that talks about their reading skills. And what you can see is, from the fall, 53% of our students would have been above that benchmark line. Now, keep in mind, the benchmark line changes from the fall to the middle of the year. And so 51% would tell me that we're holding about where we are. Did we make any enormous gains? Not on this particular assessment, but we certainly are holding where we were. If you recall the conversation from the fall, it's not about, in every minute of every day, making up for a year that was strange last year of unknown, but we have to keep making progress going forward. What's not indicative in here, because we just don't have the capacity to break it down at this time of the year as much, it's, we do at the building level, is some of our disaggregation amongst racial groups. And, and that is looking to be a little more positive for us. So I feel strongly that we're making some good progress in this area. Some of the interventions we're using, some of the curricular changes we've made have been productive. Along this line, same thing. Along this line, same thing when it comes to um, to student achievement for, this is the NWA, and these are our students in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And this is the observed growth from fall to winter. And then um, what the normal growth would be expected. So you can see our fourth graders did not quite get where they wanted to be, um, our fifth and sixth graders were. And, you know, as our conversation around facilities um, continues, third grade to fourth grade, this is a common trend. Anytime there's a transition in buildings, it's a little slower to get going again. I would venture to guess that by the end of the school year, our fourth graders are going to be uh, performing uh, much stronger. I also know that this is individualized to each cohort of students. And this particular uh, group of students may have different needs than other groups. So it's something to think about, but it is something we're, we're intervening with at fourth grade at WIS.
I just wanna say, that's a really good point, every, every time you transition between buildings, it's just, it's, they spend so much time learning a new space that the academic part kinda takes a backseat for a little bit, so.
In this district, you will see a trend in fourth and seventh grade.
Yep.
To start the school year with a dip in, dip in uh, results. But then, by the end of, by the end of those grades and the next year, students are right back where they were. And in another building where it's a K-five elementary, you'd see that in sixth grade.
Yep.
That's just a pretty normal uh, process.
Yep.
Math, um, a lot more progress that we can see, our students in, in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade have certainly made the growth that you would expect for this time of the year. It was a great sign, um, our tenth graders have some room to grow, eleventh grade did a great job. Um, and twelfth grade obviously is doing well as, well also. So when it comes to our, our goals on the vision card of improving our graduation rate, twelfth grade doing well there, standardized tests, the NWA can predict a little bit of what we're gonna see on our standardized tests. And so um, uh, this is actually the third bullet on here. So for our seventh and eighth graders, the fall NWA would predict a thirty-seven to forty-five percent proficiency on MCA for grade seven or eight, even before we did any interventions of the school year. Compared to last year, which was, which was not as twenty-point-four and twenty-nine-point-three. So we're already looking to be uh, making progress on that area with our MCA performances for grade seven and eight. I also know the seventh and eighth grade teachers are working very hard with those students and have made growth. They did not do a winter NWA because of the timing of their trimester. But we've, we've done, have done some formative assessments that shows growth, which is good.
And that's where you didn't have anything for seven, eight, nine grade?
Correct. Yes, they didn't do that particular test, yeah, we'll go back to them, yeah.
That's okay, you don't have to come back, no.
No, there was more bullets on the page before though. Yeah, okay, so I also just wanna let you know, so graduation tracking, we are identifying students who are at risk of not graduating this spring. Um, and there is less, I don't need even, I don't even need a full hand to count the number of seniors right now who are at risk of not graduating right now, so our senior class is doing well. We are de- analyzing, desegregating the data by um, student race and, and um, gender, so we have the opportunity to see if there's any gaps there. So we can make some progress on that. The fall NWA for seventh and eighth graders for reading predicts an ACT score. And we can see forty-five percent of our students were on track for an ACT of twenty-two or above in reading, which is exceptional for that, for that matter, and I, I don't have it right in front of me, but I, I wanna say it was around thirty percent twenty-four or above. So doing really well in that ACT tracking. So I think that um, for mid-year, I'm not seeing anything that has said we stalled out anywhere. So I think our staff is doing an exceptional job keeping kids growing where they need to grow, okay. Any questions on the student achievement piece before I move to some of the other areas?
In some of these cases, do we have data from prior years, or is this kinda maybe a new measurement that we're kinda starting at this point?
Uh, we do have data from prior years, yep, and this is what we have here on the, our benchmark, like on reading and math was.
That's how you establish.
That's how we've established that, right? But what is interesting about this, and this is what we're working through as a leadership team understanding is, even though my assessment's not the MCA right now, what I'm doing still predicts and, and works towards growth on the MCA. So um, that, we, what we're doing is we're making sure that we are tracking data in such a way that it's in the future years, we'll be able to go back a little easier and see. There hasn't been a, um, a, a lot of district-wide consistency um, in some of the data that we've used to show growth, and so I think that's something we aim to improve. Every building has different needs, but there's still some consistency we can follow, and our staff and, and principals do a great job of that, so. In the area of student support, um, our two objective, our two goals and measures, this is talking about um, supporting students and their mental health and their social well-being, um, breakfast participation, and then number of students that we're serving with our Fernbrook, some of our mental health support, um, it's two ways we're tracking this. Our breakfast participation is up sixteen percent so far this school year over last year. Now, some of that is because students are on campus five days a week, and so there's some of that to be said. But the bottom line is more students are eating breakfast um, than were in the past, which hopefully means they're setting themselves up for a successful school day. Fernbrook is currently serving either through a, an actual social worker or a skills worker, um, eighty-four students in our K-twelve system. Um, our goal was to in, increase that ten percent from last year. It's about the same as last year because we have a waitlist. They don't have any more staff right now to be able to expand that, so we're kinda maxing out the staff that we, that we have available to us with Fernbrook. They changed over some leadership in the last, over last summer and are doing a great job serving our kids as best they can, but they're dealing with some of the same staffing issues that other industries are. But eighty-four students are receiving some extra support in our building um, for some skills that, that they need support with.
And that's helping to keep them in the classroom and keep learning and all that.
It is.
Yep.
It is, it's, it's students that would otherwise, and I, it, it's, would be inappropriate to make too general of a statement, but a good number of these students would probably be seeking some counseling or supporting elsewhere that they're, they're getting during the school day because of this. That's not to blanket every student, some students just have some specific skills that you help with. So I don't mean to, to generalize too much, but that's part of how that looks.
Well, it keeps consistency too, where you're not going off-campus and everything disrupting the day.
Yep.
Right, right. In the area of our workforce development, um, our current partnerships have a variety of roles. So whether it's Minnesota State Mankato through PSEO to create um, more, more um, opportunities for our students to create college, to obtain college credit, our job, uh, work-based learning opportunities in town. We have students working in a variety of professions and, and roles throughout our district, our, our community. Right now, our goal is to increase the number of partnerships. That was our goal last summer as we identified it. What we're finding midway through the school year though, is that, that, that we need to clarify the rules of what a partnership looks like and identify the opportunities for growth um, kinda as a precursor to just saying, yes, I want ten percent more partnerships. Because um, a, a local business who could support an intern, a work-based learning student, that partnership looks different than another industry, uh, business partner that might just wanna come in and do a presentation to our class. And those are all important partnerships and they all are partnerships. So right now, and, and Clint and, and Dr. Miller and the group with, of the high, junior, senior high particularly, are working on some of these things. And as if you've been paying attention, I know you all have, um, you know, the, the, the conversation with the city about a potential manufacturing resource center, whether or not that's gonna be something with Minnesota State Mankato, it's gonna happen in Wasico or not. You know, there's some things that are still work, working through with that. But we are at the table, in fact, in some cases, helping facilitate some of those conversations. It's not really our project, as we've said multiple times, but we would be a user. We would be, certainly have something our students could access, have some accessibility to. And so we've been part of those conversations, so we could take advantage of that partnerships when they arrive um, for that. Um, right now, I feel like we should do a little bit of a celebration. Uh, we have two unfilled positions in the district, um, currently, they both are paraprofessionals. We don't have any applicants for them right now, so if you'd like to apply, please do. But I think it's hard to compare to last year just because of our learning model. We, um, as Elizabeth and I spoke about this earlier this week, we had several unfilled positions last year that we just, we ended up not having to fill because of learning, or be, or choosing to fill pursuant any further because of learning model shifts. Whereas this year, we're working on filling every open position that we would need for, to serve our students. And so I think we have fewer open, open positions this year in general, um, and hopefully that continues to get better for us. I, as you all know from last board meeting, we just um, supported the, the improvement for the contract for our paraprofessionals and hopefully um, that honors the people that we currently have working for us, and so they continue to enjoy being here. And we also can fill some of those additional positions that need to be worked through as well.
Cause we've had up to six or seven open parapositions and now we're just down to two?
Correct.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I think we're, and, and we're, we're finding good people too. That's really important, I think, to note is that we're, we're hiring quality individuals who wanna work and support our students and, and that's a, that's also very important.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, great.
Uh, in terms of community engagement, as you can see the trend here going through all of our focus areas, registration guide updates um, should be complete here in terms of as students begin registering here in February. It's very, it probably will be subtle from a student perspective, but from a parent perspective, hopefully does give a little bit more guidance to career pathways in terms of, if I'm interested in this particular field, here are some courses I would like to take, um, or I could consider taking as they, as they choose their four-year or um, particularly in grades nine through twelve path uh, through our, through our high school. So it's year one of this process, and so we're looking at, and this is something that I know Clint and I have talked a lot about, and because he's so good at what he's doing, that we wanna make sure we're doing this part all the way through before we add too many tails to it. And so hopefully, we're seeing some of those subtle updates that make the registration guide more manageable for folks. At least from, at least from a career pathway perspective, if, if that's not something a family needs for their, for their work, that's okay too, how they work with their, with their child. But we should have some opportunity to, to be a little bit more aligned in that area.
And that guide will be posted on the website, I assume?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think registration opens, I think it's next week.
Okay.
Uh, maybe the week after, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna get the date wrong yet, cause I haven't directly talked to the dates yet about that.
Okay.
Web analytics is something we're working on right now, uh, in terms of, we want our website to be something that people go to for information. Interestingly enough, I just looked at it with Jenny today, and she did a great job of tracking down Brian Herron's on vacation, so she had tracked down some passwords. She was able to pull some information for us today. But um, our website traffic is down a little bit this school year compared to last school year. And um, I, my initial thought process is probably that's because of last year being such a unique year with the pandemic, hybrid learning, people getting onto the website to learn about different things that were happening. So we were just watching that over time, our goal is to increase the web traffic on our website um, for information, and we'll see how that goes over time. I think like, like anything in this particular report, la- comparing to last year is a little bit challenging. Just cause last year was, we, we, we don't know if that's an anomaly or not.
Yep.
Right? So we, we use it as a comparison and we're honest with ourselves and we see where it goes from there.
Yep.
And then community engagement meetings, including the number of, of, of opportunities, we, we, I think we've been out working with our community as often as we can through our facility task force, through, through breakfasts where I'm out at the, the various uh, places, um, having the opportunity for, for community to get into our buildings. I mean, I think our activities, um, being back at full, full capacity has been exciting. And, and I've had a couple of community members, just even in the last couple of weeks, who have, who have asked to come and meet with me about just various questions they've had, it's all been relatively procedural and things that are just interested in the school district, which um, hopefully is an indication that we're accessible, and that we're able to be contacted. And I'm always willing to sit down and meet with individuals, answer questions, or, or direct them to the appropriate leader in our school district who can, who has the expertise in that area. Uh, the last two are, are really those, I, I put them together, cause academic programming and teaching and learning really are, are a lot of measurements around the same things. NWA scores and Accuplacer scores are part of this, which was kind of alluded to in our student achievement uh, portion. But we're really working on how we flexibly use our space. How do we make sure that the students are getting what they need in each area? As I was walking through Hartley last week and I saw all the kids, and there's probably like five different types of chairs in the one room that, that kids can choose from to sit at, and high tables and low tables. And um, I think that is part of it in order to support um, all of our use of space. In all honesty, um, the last month has been a little bit challenging, just as we work through our staffing, through some of the illnesses we've had and absences we've had. However, that's created some flexible use of space in terms of how we've used our, used our, our common spaces, how we've used our flexible spaces for students to be in spots where they can still be learning, but um, maybe have a different instructional model for that particular day. I wanna just, be, because I said that, I should clarify, our staff has done an exceptional job of working through that. And, and I, I think I've said that in my last report, so I, I think I've already said that once. And I think we, uh, we appear to be over the hump in terms of, of illnesses and absences. The absences and illnesses this week are down significantly. Um, and so that's really encouraging that hopefully we're, we're getting um, more healthy with that. Uh, our pathway program, I think, programming is coming along. I think that where we are, where we are finding our way, is how much of that is what we control within, in terms of how we align our courses to a particular career pathway. And then where our partners in the community help us with internships, or we need employees to do this or, or to drive that. And so as we create those career pathways even more aligned, I, I think students are gonna find that they don't, are not driven a certain way forever, and that's just the way it is. But we really understand what our options are going forward. And then what was really an, an exciting thing, it, that Brooke McGuire and Teaching and Learning Department have been working on is really a literacy framework for Wasico Public Schools. What does, what does literacy mean for Wasico Public Schools? And between state standards, between some of the assessments we take, between all the grade level work, what we, what we don't have put together as concretely as we'd like, is really a framework of what does it mean to be a, well, a literate graduate of Wasico Public Schools. And, and I wanna commend Brooke and her team for working hard on that. That's one of her personal goals for this year, to have some of that framework done this school year. And that really meets the needs of our Teaching and Learning Department and some of the PD.
Would that be K through twelve?
Correct, yes. Yeah.
That's really, that's a really interesting response to a few years of MCA scores that were not great in reading. And so that's, I would, I'd be interested in seeing where, where that, as it becomes more something to be shared, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I think if you, um, most of us are familiar with the concept of loose-tight leadership and, and what, what things are tight and what things are loose. And our buildings, because they are, we have such dedicated professionals, really embrace trying different things and working hard and taking risks and supporting kids. We want them to be able to do that. But within a framework of here's your parameters and here's the, and, and state standards do that. But we also can do that together as a district as well.
Yeah.
And, and, and part of, and I'll just say, part of, it's the reason why it's one of Brooke's goals, is because convening all the groups and committees to put that together involves a significant amount of leadership. And so as she continues to develop as, as strongly as a director teaching and learning as she is and is becoming, working through that, so the staff feels part of it, and the staff is engaged in that, is no small task. And so I'm excited to see how, how that continues to progress, and I really appreciate her work and all the staff's work on that.
Well, it's an interesting concept, because you've got, where you wanna look at the growth, yet you've gotta have the testing. So they have to learn to work in tandem with each other, but they work against each other at some, you know, point. So it's, I don't know, it's kind of an interesting thing to watch, and see how it forms.
One of the things we've talked about a lot is um, is learning work. And we talked about this a little bit with some of our last summer, learning work, implementation work and standard work. But as you're moving through that and you add more learning work, something has to leave the system too. Or our plate becomes so overflowed that we can't do anything well. And I know from my own experience, when I was in the classroom, um, and I taught kindergarten. So I loved that apple unit, or I loved that particular craft that we did on any given day. And when it did, there wasn't room for it anymore because we had to do something different, that's really hard. And the only way to really support staff through that is to involve them in this process. So they feel like they, they're not being told, oh, you don't could do that anymore, but now it's, here's the priorities, what we have to get into our day. And they're working through that, so I'm excited about it, it's really, it's, I would say relatively early in the development of this. But it is something that I think will help our, our academic programs, it'll help our teaching, it will certainly help our, our staff to have some more guidelines. Guidance is not the right word, guidance of how some of the things they can, they wanna help work with to support students in that regard.
Yep.
So, I feel like, and that's the last slide, I feel like um, we're making good. So I feel like, and that's the last slide, I feel like, um, we're making good progress on our vision cards for, at this point in the school year. It alw- this is always the, um, the time when it's, it's, it's easy to say we're making progress. So I look forward to coming back here in June and showing you what the final numbers are, cause that's kinda where the, whoever meets the road, so to speak. But I think we're making progress on this. Elizabeth, would you just wanna speak a little bit to how we're using this with our departments and buildings? Just thirty-second overview, how it's, how it's, how we're using the vision card concept for your work?
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm assuming it's kinda going to come in, you and I have been talking about lately of, you know, um, not, so also, I'll speak to mine, maybe that's the best way to, to say that. So for our business office, we've never had those intentional conversations about how does the district vision relate to us in our department? How can we, you know, again, as rightfully so, everything should be centered around like academics and, and growth and lifelong learners, well, how does that relate to us in a business office, depending on the numbers, right? And, and so this is the first time we've really had those engaged conversations of, okay, how does our work lend to, um, community engagement? How does our work lend to the workforce? Um, and so we're having, I think, some really great conversations on how we can have ownership in that vision for the district. And like I said, this is the first time we've really had those intentional conversations. And, and we've got some work to do, right? And starting from, from the, the ground up. But, um, I, I feel too, it's really important for all of our staff, and I'm, and I'm gonna speak to my team, that they do see how important their role is and all of the big picture that we're trying to, um, you know, provide again for our staff or students or community. So it's, it's been some really interesting and, I think, fun and engaging conversations that we've been having.
Yeah. Well, it's just an example of, I mean, a school district, if, everyone that, everyone in these buildings is, is their educators. So it doesn't matter if you're, um, a custodian, if you're a para, if you're in the business office, everyone is part of our, our education plan, so. And I think that these vision cards, we have the district level, but you, obviously you have your, your department level or building level. And I think it's great that you're all part of our strategic plan, and you're all part of, um, getting, getting our kids to the next level, so, yeah.
Yeah, because we know, as district leaders, that everybody's role has a purpose.
Yeah.
In meeting our strategic plan goals. But if I'm working day-to-day in my building, doing my job.
Yep.
And I don't expect them to think about it every day while they're doing, but to have that understanding of how we fit into the, what's my purpose?
Yep.
Particularly in such trying times of education, when this is, there is no more important work. I would argue, but that's, I'm probably a little biased. There's, there's not very many, uh, areas of work that could, that could rival us in what we're doing for supporting our future. And every role is really important. So I, I say that because it, this vision card process, as it evolves, and as I've been reminded by a couple mentors, this takes a couple of years
Yep.
for our, for our, um, everyone to kinda get it where we want it to go. It gets a little clunky at first, but, uh, I feel like we're making good progress. And I don't, I, I would welcome any board feedback, either now or another time, but I feel like my reports have more meat to them with some data and information. I felt like last year, I spent a little bit more time just talking about some of the things we were doing without a lot of results. Now, the end of this school year, again, the rubber will meet the road a little bit, but that's what we're going, we're aiming for. So hopefully that's been helpful for you as a board too, to feel a little bit more concrete in our accountability.
It shows the collaboration and how everything's intertwined and works out with each other.
Yeah.
Everybody matters. Everybody takes a role in, in everything that we're doing as a district.
But I, I do, I do appreciate seeing the, the numbers more than once a year, I guess. That is, I think that having this mid-year progress is really important. And, cause normally we just wait for the fall when you get your world's best workforce report, and I, I, and then you're kinda like, shoot, what could we have done differently? And now we can see that progress and, as, as it's happening, and I, I, I like that, so, yeah.
It also allows us, and not necessarily at the board level, but also, I always ask, what's the governance question with that, right? And then, but you think about which of those, um, assessments are really driving our instruction.
Yeah.
And so is that the right one to be showing you? Well, we'll, we'll find out in, in, later in the school year, as the formative assessments tell us, and our, our staff tells us.
Yep.
That was valuable to us, or that wasn't.
Yep.
And then we can, then we create consistency.
Yep.
Of, of, looking at the same, same information. One thing that education does to us, and it's, not, very often do I say things are done to us, cause that's not accountable, right? We were, saw that speaker we had at MSBA. But, um, sometimes the ball changes, or the, the goal changes a lot, or the, here's a new test, here's a new assessment, here's a new option. And for us, we need to narrow it down to what we can be consistent with. And I think this card process will help us with that.
Yeah. Definitely. Um, any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you, I really, I really do appreciate, um, I appreciate the, the numbers and seeing that progress, so. And just being reminded actively also of our strategic plan, so I, I just think that that's really good, so. Alright, so that is the end of our workshop agenda, um, unless anyone else needed to add something. But, um, our next regular school board meeting is Thursday, February seventeenth, uh, at five-thirty PM, also here in the central building, second floor conference room. Please feel free to email comments, questions, and concerns to wasicadistrict@gmail.com, and we can read your comments at a meeting. You're also welcome to attend in person, and we encourage that, so. That is all, thank you.